Call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions, which will be followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Mr. Hamilton?
Let us pray. Our merciful and heavenly Father, we come to you now asking for your guidance. Father, that you guide our hearts and our tongue and our minds to do what is pleasinging in your sight. Father, I ask that you bless all those who call Bluffton home. And Father, that we can make Bluffton a better home every day for the people we serve. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes. Mr. Stees, are there any changes?
None unless council has any.
Council, if not, is there a motion?
Say.
All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Um, another one, right? Up next, we have the meeting minutes from seven, eight, twenty-five. Is there a motion? All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. And up next, we have the special meeting minutes of July fifteenth on twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Next, we have presentation celebrations and recognitions, and we'll have the USCB Sand Shark Welcome Week proclamation. How are y'all today? So, this is Danielle Lopez and Taylor Wilson.
Yes, sir.
And this. The University of South Carolina Beaufort is a fully accredited and comprehensive institution within the University of South Carolina system. USC has nineteen undergraduate degree programs and two graduate degree programs. They are welcoming more than 2,200 students for the start of the twenty-five academic year. Mayor Tumer, along with Bluffton Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of August eighteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five as USCB Sand Shark Welcome Week. Would you ladies like to say anything about it?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate this. Thank you.
Are y'all excited?
Yeah. We have so many new freshmen coming in. We have over six hundred freshmen coming in this semester. We are fully excited and we're just ready to get back on campus and ready to see and show them what the town of Bluffton has.
You play some softball?
Or basketball.
So much, my heart, so. Don't want to get a picture? One thorn and two roses.
Ready? One, two, three. I got it. Thank you so much.
Up next, we'll have public comment. Um, Mr. Wood, you want to read these rules for me?
Yes, sir. In the name of civility, which we desperately need in this community. During public comment, each speaker is limited to a total of three minutes per meeting, regardless of whether the person is speaking on their own behalf or as an agent for others. Meeting attendees may not donate, transfer, yield, or give all or any portion of their speaking time to another person. All public comments are to be conducted from the podium and directed to the town council as a whole and not to any member thereof. All speakers shall be mindful and respectful of those participating in or present at the meeting. Speakers shall be expected to be civil in their language and shall refrain from comment or behavior that involves disorderly speech or action, name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene or indecent remarks and/or disruptive actions. All speakers shall confine their comments to issues under the jurisdiction of the town council. Speakers shall not use the public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, service, goods, or candidates for public office. Any speaker that violates these rules and protocols for public comment may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. Any person whose comments have been ruled out of order shall immediately cease and desist from further improper comments. The refusal of an individual to desist from further improper comments may subject the individual to removal from the meeting and/or a citation under section two-dash-four-nine of the Town Code.
First, we'll have Marie Kowalczuk. Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Yes.
Whether or not you live in the town of Bluffton or not.
Yes, my name is Marie Kowalczuk. I live at one sixty-one Pine Crest Circle, and I am a resident of Bluffton. I'm here representing the Pine Crest community and just want to thank the town council for supporting our opposition to the potential development on our golf course, which borders practically every single family home in our community. So, we really support that. And Shell Hall has also sent you a letter, I think you received, about their opposition as well to this. I'm expecting to get one from Hampton Hall as well. But I would also like to ask, is it possible that you, I know you're transferring sixty density units subsequently in this agenda. Could you share how many density units the Bluffton township still has?
We don't answer questions during public comment, but we will get the information that you request.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we have Ms. Sharon Brown.
Good evening, Town Council. Sharon Brown, one-six-three, y'all should turn this thing down. One-six-three Buck Island Row. So, I stand before you here today because I emailed all of you all and Vicky Smalls in reference to the Neighborhood Assistant Program. In reference to the reevaluating and adjusting the income threshold of the median income. I submitted an application. I had a serious roof leak and submitted an application. And the median income is set pretty high. For someone who has a family of two, you have to make sixty percent of that. That's fifty-two thousand dollars. I kind of exceeded that, so my application was not approved. So, that means that with the median income that's now, is it, had you guys reviewed it for what's going on? The increase in the economy as of today, has that been set along with the increase with the economy that should be considered? Because I ride through Buck Island, Simonsville, and go through, there's a lot of plastic on people roofs. I don't know if that's because they don't qualify because of the median income, but that should be a consideration that you guys look into to increase that because I'm a family of two. I have to have six kids in order to meet that median. I mean, and that's highly impossible at my late age, right? It ain't gonna happen. But with that said, I'll move on. So, now I want to talk about the Resident Resource Guide that has great information in it. It talks about the growth and annexation, town services, voting and election, parks, road, and development. But what it doesn't have is what Bluffton is made of, what makes Bluffton. And one of the things is the Gullah Geechee community. And it's specifically a black neighborhood and communities, and it's a contribution of black leaders and institutions historically in justice and preservation efforts. That's what they do. So, we know that Ms. Bridget Fraser just opened up my days. Has everybody went there? All of you town council people should already been there to eat there, I'm certain, right? Everybody, that means a yes, because I don't see nobody shaking their head. But with that said, this particular resource guide, it does not talk about preserving and the celebration of Gullah and African-American history. This place hosts educational programs. It creates a cultural heritage site with immersed learning, and that's that Gullah Heritage Center. So, what I would like for you town council people to do is have a mobile town council meeting. Go out to the people, because I see your social media page, y'all do a lot of saying what the town does, how to become a town council member. You know, we have two seats coming up. I've been thinking seriously about running, but the Lord said maybe that's not for you because I won't be able to come up here and raise hell with y'all. But with that said, I want you guys to give the Gullah Geechee community a little more, you know, visibility. You guys come on and mingle with us. Terry Finger, I don't see you, especially, I never see Steven. Y'all come on out here and let's integrate together, because that's what our mission says, right? Our vision says that we are all one. We are all for the people, right, Emily?
Right.
That's what I'm saying. God bless you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And the bell did not ring.
It's over. Up next, we have Mr. Garfield Moss.
Well, my name is Garfield Moss, and I've been a resident here since nineteen eighty.
Give him your address, Garfield.
Oh, my address is four Garfields Way. And, uh, but I've been a resident here since nineteen eighty-eight. And a couple of years ago, I went to the Don Ryan Center to get some information on the, uh, the grants that they had available for COVID. And I explained to the lady that was in charge there that I was not computer literate, and I needed her to explain to me, you know, what I needed to do to get the information. And she was very rude to me, which I've discussed with the, with the town manager and the attorney. And they really apologized for her rudeness. But she issued a complaint to me, to the police department, said that I was, uh, very aggressive with her. And so, I talked to her boss, and I told him that I was aggressive. But I was not rude to her, and I explained to them also that I'm very aggressive and very persistent. That's the key to my success. And, but I was not rude. And she, uh, they called the police on me and had the police come to my house and issue a no trespassing warrant, warning to me. They said if I came back on the property again, that they would have me arrested. And I thought that was pretty, pretty extreme, and I think I did mention it to Mr. Tumer also. And he indicated to me that they probably have a camera to verify, you know, my actions. And, and Terry and, I mean, Mr. Finger and, uh, and, uh, Town Manager, they apologized for her actions. And they said they couldn't be responsible for, for her rudeness to me. And I told them, well, I don't see why, you know, how she could do, be that rude when all I was doing is seeking information on how to get some government funding for myself and other people in the community with my nonprofit. And it's gone on deaf ears now for almost two years. And, and I went by the town manager's office last week. I mentioned it to him, and he told me to go see Mr. Finger because it was a legal matter. And I told him, well, I don't see any reason to go back to Mr. Finger because he, they didn't do anything at that time. And maybe I should just go to the state and complain. And, and, uh, but nothing has ever been done. And I just think it was horrible because I've built six houses here, and Mr. Tumer knows me. I've been his neighbor for over seventeen years. And I've been a real asset to this community. And, uh, I don't see why I was treated that way. And I'd like to know if somebody would, would take that in, in consideration and see about solving that kind of problem. Because, you know, I think the judge should be responsible for the people that work for you and to give people like me correct information. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Oh, I forgot. They sent the police to my house and told me that I couldn't come back into the building. And then the manager told me that.
Mr. Mayor, if there's three minutes to rub, then I think we should, we should, we gotta go by our rules.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on here to Communications of Mayor and Council. We'll start with Ms. Fraser.
Thank you, Mayor Tumer. I don't have anything personally, but for the gentleman who just spoke, is it possible that we can direct him to who can help resolve that if he's saying that he's been banned or disbarred from one of our buildings? In terms of who he can communicate with to address whatever unresolved issues still exist?
That was three years ago when that trespass was lifted within a couple of days. And the reason he was directed to our attorney was because when he came in, he said he was threatened to sue over it. So, I said he needed to speak to our legal counsel.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, please. Um, I wanted to, uh, give an attaboy for Beaufort County for a few things. One is, not too long ago, they repaved the portion of Bluffton Parkway that was the worst part from the traffic circle out of Goodways. I think you may recall how bad. from the traffic circle out of Goodways. I think you may recall how bad the potholes and everything were. So we appreciate that in the town of Bluffton. They removed the speed hump and replaced the speed hump with a speed bump on Gothie Road. Yeah, thank you is right to Beaufort County for that. And also, one of the things that we've talked about before, which will be coming up here shortly, is the Live Well Project would not have been possible without the partnership of Beaufort County and Beaufort Memorial and the town of Bluffton. So I want to just commend them. They don't usually get too many good comments from too many in the public, but they're getting them tonight because they earned them and they deserved them. And so thank you, Beaufort County.
Yes, I'd like to give kudos to one of our council members, Ms. Bridget Fraser, for trying to feed all of Bluffton. I know you've been working hard, and just showing up tonight with a voice. I think you're gonna be a success, and I hope that your future with Maud Daisy is just as bright as your visions are. I also want to say to the community at Pinecrest that go home and go to sleep. We got you. Okay, we're gonna take care of you. All right, thank you.
It's hard to follow that thread. But I do have somebody that, some good news that I would like to say to, and Ms. Kim Conti, who's not here, but to Stephen and Leary in Public Works. The town tested a non-toxic chemical on a few parks recently, and thankfully it has worked well. And so at this point, any spraying that you see done by town employees is toxic-free, which I think is a huge win for our community, our children, and the runoff into the river. So I'm hoping that that will become a policy in the near future.
Anything else, Mary?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't have too much other than I just wanted to ask everybody to keep the Reeves family in your prayers. Ms., I don't know if you know, but Ms. Mary Reeves passed here.
Yesterday or the day before.
At 95. Mother of five boys, and I don't know how many grandkids, but probably as much as I have.
No.
Or close. Anyway, that's just, she and her family, the late Jerry Reeves, were very instrumental in helping Bluffton survive back through the days when there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity or jobs. He had a part of the Oyster Company at one time. RSI, the huge commercial laundry that you see on Buck Island Road, has been there, they've been there since, I think, the early 80s or so, maybe even late 70s. So just, she was a good one, and I hate to see her gone, but y'all just keep her family in your prayers, if you will. Thank you.
All right. Next, workshop agenda items. This is gonna be a workshop update on South Carolina law H 3292 related to golf carts and the allowance of local municipalities to adopt similar regulations. Ms. Heather Collins is gonna educate us on all this.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, tonight is just a workshop, one, to just go over what the state approved as an ordinance related to golf carts in May of this past year, and then to seek your direction on how you'd like to move forward, whether it's to review and get some more information, move forward with an ordinance, or continue as is. So just real briefly, the, so like I said, back in May, the state approved an ordinance related to golf carts. And what it did was allowed the municipalities, or gave the authority to municipalities and local jurisdictions to address golf carts and the rules and regulations associated that, particularly as it relates to operation at night. And then if you so choose to allow operation at night, what safety provisions would have to be in place. So they did outline that if you were to allow, what we call actually LSVs, so low-speed vehicles or golf carts, if you were to allow them to operate at night in the evening hours when it is dark, at the very minimum, you would have to require seat belts for children 12 and under, and lights. And again, this reiterates that, that again, this is at a minimum, if you were to allow them at night, 12 and under must wear some sort of restraint. And then also, the lights. In addition, it does require that it be on roads 35 miles an hour or less. And then also, what we've drafted as something to consider or to move forward, not roundabouts. Those are typically multi-lanes in the town of Bluffton. So that would be something to consider. And then obviously, we'd have to have insurance. What we've done here, it's a little hard to see, but is pulled together a map on where those speed limits are 35 miles or less. It's a little bit hard to see here, but you see in yellow is the areas that would not be allowed. So that's where it is too high. It's either over 35 miles an hour, and/or, I did leave out, more than two lanes, so four-lane roads. So it shows where it may be excluded if you were to move forward with some sort of ordinance. And again, if we continue through this, we can get some better visuals for you to see. This is just a blow-up of the Old Town Historic District, where you do see more golf carts just because of the existing laws and regulations. So again, that yellow is where the speed limit is higher, so Bluffton Road, and no, I'm sorry, Berchta Truck.
So it would, those are 35 miles per hour, so they wouldn't be allowed there?
On the yellow.
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize. I'm looking.
That's 35 miles per hour, sorry, yeah.
The new law says 35.
Or less.
Less.
Correct, yes.
35 or less.
So the yellows are actually allowable?
They're allowable, yes.
Sorry about that, yes.
And the blue?
Blues 30 mile, they're broken up by miles, but everything that's color-coded is, would be allowed underneath 35 miles an hour.
But while you have this map on the screen, can I clarify that for the roads not in the town, this is not?
So currently, like I said, Beaufort County, at this point, they have not begun any discussions. So we are only allowed, per the state, to regulate what's within our jurisdiction. So if it is within the town, yes, we can, we can.
So some of our charges and all joy would not be?
Correct. So anything in that gray shaded area, that's outside the town. There are certain things that you did mention, like I said, it also requires that 16, you must be 16 years of age with a driver's license to drive. You also must have insurance and be registered. And those are some things we can't change. Pardon me?
And a permit?
Yes.
A DMV permit, which I will say to anybody applying for it. I applied three or four weeks ago and haven't seen anything yet. So.
And that is state regulated?
Yes, those are things that, at the minimum, that we cannot address and change.
Except for, is it true that if it's a UTV versus an LSV, it does not have to be registered?
Correct. There's, there's three different vehicles. There's, so there's LSVs, the low-speed vehicles, which is a little bit different than a golf cart. So you have a golf cart, the traditional golf cart, and I believe it references the speed limit that it can go. I believe it's 20 miles per hour from the start, or 25 miles per hour on a paved road. They get very specific with how they define it. The LSV is sometimes what you see in bigger cities, more urban areas, that'll issue like traffic tickets. They're like, kind of like a bigger golf cart. No, off-road vehicles are the UTVs. So those are the utility vehicles. The state is actually looking to revise the ordinance and include that as a separate issue. So stay tuned for more information about that one.
I'm trying to envision the middle grade.
UTVs like your four-wheelers and things like that.
So low-speed vehicle would be, if you've ever seen like the Jims that drive around, they're like e-vehicle, they look like golf carts, but they don't have any like things for golf bags or anything in the back. They're just, they're not much different than a golf cart. They're just a little.
And a little faster. They go, I think, 35 miles per hour.
The state considers them two different definitions.
And then confirming, when you talk to the age limit, so it's not you have to have a permit and you can drive with an adult, or a license, when you get that at 15 and a half, you have to be 16 years old?
Yes, the way the state law is written, 16 years old with a driver's license.
But you can drive a car with, if you're 15 years old and there's some, or the license. So I don't know how that makes sense.
I don't know either.
You can drive a car or a truck, but you can't drive a golf cart.
I don't know either. And I don't, and it possibly could be because of the driving at night, because I know, just from experience with my sons driving at, below the age of 16, I think it may even be 18, there's restrictions on your license. So it's, you know, whether or not, where you're going to and from, and if it's at night. So I don't know, but.
But there's nothing we can do about that, even if we?
My understanding is no.
Okay.
But if you choose to move forward, we'll look into it.
In your packet, the state law is very specific to say, a person operating a golf cart on a public highway must be at least 16 years of age, hold a valid driver's license, and have in his possession. So we couldn't say, even if you have a valid driver's license at 15, because it's specific to at least 16 years old.
And like I said, if we choose to move forward, I'll have some larger maps with the key a little bit larger, so we can all read them, including myself. And so like, sorry, go ahead.
I have a comment quick. You may have said this, I'm not sure it was illustrated, but my understanding is regardless of whether it's a 35 mile an hour road, if it's a four-lane road, you're not supposed to be able to drive down the middle of that road.
Correct.
You can cross it.
You can cross it. And you also still have the same, and I'm sorry, left out some of the existing things, you also still have to be within four miles of your registered address. No more than four miles from your registered address.
So this means basically that golf carts can travel down a major road?
Until they get to that traffic circle where it turns four lanes.
Or wherever it's 45 miles an hour.
Right. Or, well, and at night, or if it's the portions that are in the county.
So down to Buck Island, because that's where the speed limit would.
So it could be complicated, if only the town of Bluffton approves changes. It could, it could become complicated. We could write more restrictions or regulations as far as where they could go and what those are. Right now, we just wanted to go through, here's what the state law does address, as far as they're at least giving the local jurisdictions the ability to address nighttime driving of golf carts. So like I said, just wanted to see if that was something that you wanted us to monitor, continue to review, or we did put together, with the help of the town attorneys, a draft ordinance for you to start thinking about, are there pieces and parts in there that you would like to move forward with, or, again, further review?
Even though this is listed as a workshop item, I would hope that council would support me, and let's not make any decision on this until we can have a workshop where we can have interaction with the public.
So would that, would it hurt, you said you have an ordinance, like a template that we can look at and see what changes or not that we would want to do? I mean, to have something on paper to?
Yeah.
In the packet is a very simple ordinance, draft ordinance. If you wanted to discuss it further, I could pull it up now, or we could schedule a separate workshop, as Councilman Hamilton suggested. It's your preference. We have strategic planning in a couple of months. It's gonna be here sooner rather than later, so we can continue to monitor and bring that back then, or do another, do it in a different audience.
I think we should continue to monitor, because it is complicated.
But for clarity, there are some items that we already discussed that are state-mandated, the insurance, the DMV permit, seat belts for 12 and under, childcare restraint, if they're not able to fit in a seat belt.
So the childcare restraint is not part of state law?
It's not.
No.
No. It just says that a child 12 and under has to have a seatbelt on.
Right. And that you can't hold.
You can't put a, you're old.
But it's not defined in state law?
That's something we would need to look at.
And I agree totally. I see some dangerous stuff going on out there, and to not address it before, sooner than later, I think would be bad on us. We need some, I'm all for golf carts. I'm all for everybody going where they want to and all that. I totally support it personally. We have three golf carts and a bunch of kids. But we need some rules, and we need our rules to be enforced before something happens, because it's, everyone is not adhering to the level of safety that I think we should be enforcing.
Okay.
Can you break it down, what we're really talking about is nighttime?
Nighttime, and I need additional, additional safety regulations, and/or specific locations.
But not four-lane roads.
The four-lane roads, we reference the traffic circles.
But those are the only three things that we really have a say over?
My, my understanding is, is yes.
And child restraints.
Right, which would be a safety feature, so.
And nighttime driving. Some, some cities have tried to define what nighttime driving is. You know, do we want from 7 o'clock in the winter to 7 o'clock in the morning, or do we want to say something like 11 o'clock at night? I mean, you know, it just depends. So that's another option.
It does. There's, what the state has done, and I will let Attorney Terry Finger tell me if I'm wrong on this, but what the, what the state has done with this law, as brief as it is, versus previous ordinances, at least given you all as a town, the authority to further restrict or regulate golf carts, which was not an option in the past.
I agree with Councilman Hamilton in terms of table and have a workshop, but I also feel that to Mayor Tumor's point, this is something of grave concern, because there's a lot of hazardous operation going on currently with golf carts. And I think if we have a workshop, it'll be an opportunity where we can go through and provide some guidance to residents with golf carts in terms of what these updates from the state mean, also be able to answer any questions that people have. I think we also need to have guidelines that also makes that a little more clear for people to understand, just as we can put in safeguards for them and the general public, because you definitely don't want to continue down that path without it, and just let it be a free-for-all, I don't think is at anyone's advantage.
Right. And, and we have to have an ordinance that our enforcement, our officers can enforce, because the ordinance is wasted, useless if you don't have enforcement of it. So I'm all for planning a workshop with the general public, getting all the input, and ratcheting it out, and figuring out what's best for everyone.
Okay, so.
So on the workshop, would y'all feel comfortable at the September 9th council meeting, which is our next one, we can do a workshop right before that, say like 4:00? And lead up right into it? Or would you rather us do something before the next council meeting?
I don't know about 4:00, but we're asking the general public to come. That's the only.
So that's why I wanted to get your input, is do you want us to schedule it, like between the next council meeting and a separate meeting, and how y'all want us to proceed?
What do y'all think?
The next quarterly workshop's not till October.
I would like to see it done before then. I mean, I think.
Before council?
I mean, before the next quarterly meeting in October.
We have to have two readings on it anyway, so.
Correct.
You know, the sooner we figure out what it is we're gonna do and get it started, I think the better off for everyone.
Well, we'll have Marcia reach out to you, and we'll look for like a 6:00 time to schedule one.
We have to definitely make sure we get the word out.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll work together, or we'll work on scheduling a workshop before the quarterly workshop, educate, more educational in details as far as what is in ordinance and law now, what the state says we cannot change and alter, and then what we are allowed to change per that law, and then some, at least some talking points of safety, safety features, lap belts, seat belts, child restraints, whatever it may be, lights, and driving at night, and things of that nature. Is that correct? Okay, we'll do it.
And make sure you have good batteries.
Yes, good batteries. Long-lasting batteries, however you allow them to drive.
Okay. Up next, we're gonna, this is a workshop as well, consideration and direction for potential amendments to the town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, Design Standards on Accessory Buildings. Kevin, I.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Council. And obviously, for these golf carts, we need a place to put them. So we'll start talking about some carports. So we had an issue that came up. This has been before you already, concerns about dealing with carports and how they are regulated in the UDO. So since the adoption of the UDO in 2011. So since the adoption of the UDO in 2011, carports that are at least 121 square feet are classified as a carriage house. And it's, it falls under that carriage house building type, which does not exceed a maximum square footage of 1,200 and a footprint of 800 square feet and has design guidelines. So we held some workshops, Historic Preservation Commission as well as Planning Commission. They raised a bunch of concerns and I'm just going to kind of gloss over these and let you guys read through them. So some of the concerns were about prefabricated carports not meeting our standards that we have in our code. Need to differentiate between a carriage house and a carport. And then to clear definition of the carport is needed, what it's designed, how it's enclosed, you know, its secondary structure, the square footage, things like that. Were all brought up. In the end, I don't think the, either the HPC or the PC had a true recommendation. So we did that in October, November of last year. Then this past year, excuse me, this past April, we came in front of you, wanted some direction as to how we would move forward. And I took a lot of, took a lot of notes from you guys. Summarized that and provided some of that information in your packet. But really kind of overall intent, common sense, practicality. I'm just going to go through these really quickly. Should be treated as separate building classifications. Some of the regulations that are sensitive, supportive to the historic district. Wanted some appropriate scale, size, height, you know, the visual diversity, you know, not uniformed, you know, some screening requirements for them. Regulate them to residential uses only. Function with space for, you asked for two vehicles, a boat and/or a golf cart. That was the description. Some limited utilities be allowed for them. For access and orientation, you did not like the have to turn to the side. Want to be able to go straight in. And then also for the zoning classifications, wanted to be flexible enough to accommodate various lot sizes, configurations, dealing with setbacks. So construction standards, hurricane resistant, we talked about that. Allow for the approved fab structures that are already in place, but establish minimum standards for new ones. Talked about tree preservation, making sure that they're not cutting down a bunch of trees just to put a carport in. And then make sure that their, the relevant building codes are being met. And then we talked about community engagement and then the next steps. So, you know, you wanted to make sure we talk about additional public input. This might be an item if you're, if you'd like to have a workshop, that this would be a great one to piggyback on for the golf carts. So we could have that as well at the same time to get that public input, if that's what you're looking for. So we talked about carports pre-2011. They were typically smaller, just the prefab size, just to cover the boats. Most of them are non-conforming. Then post-2011, that's when the UDO was, or the Unified Development Ordinance was established. And that's where the carports were then defined as that carriage house. So it kind of lumped it into that building type. And then we talked about properties that have already been, already have an approved carriage house that they couldn't then add a second one. So that was one of the concerns is that if you have a carriage house right now, you have a principal structure and then a carriage house, you then could not have a carport as well. So some of the things, some of the things that we're looking at doing and is, one of them is dealing with a lot coverage, so a maximum lot coverage. And what that does is it limits the amount of impervious area that you'd have on your property. So we would allow for, you know, if you have a principal structure on your lot and then an accessory structure on your lot, or your carriage house, and then you wanted to put a carport, we'd make sure number one is that you have enough space on your property. So that way you're not over, overbuilding on your lot. That helps for a lot of reasons. Provides the open space. It allows for trees to, to grow. It allows for stormwater to penetrate the ground. So this maximum lot coverage will help balance the built environment with the open space environments. So to kind of give you an exercise, what does that look like? So when we say, what is a maximum lot coverage? I took a, this is a home over in the Stock Farm community. The lot itself is almost 17,000 square feet. And then you can see is that we have approximately 30% coverage. And you can just see, but based off of the lot, that there's a lot of open space. So this lot would be able to have a carport on that. They'd have ample space in order to put it on there. Then I kind of took a lot that's over off of the corner of DeBose and Lawrence Street, where the lot itself is less than 5,000 square feet. You can see the house footprint at almost 2,000, you know, 800 for the carriage house, the driveway and sidewalks. All that equates up to 58%. Now, what we have scheduled is a maximum lot size, since this is an additional building type, with a maximum lot coverage of 70%. So technically, there's an additional about 12% of the lot that could be used for an additional, you know, coverage. However, based on this configuration, they wouldn't be able to put a carport on that lot. So that's for the maximum lot coverage that we're referring to. And then the next one was the actual proposed edits. So the consideration is creating that new building type. So you're looking for a new building type. We talked about that it would be regulated to residential properties only. And again, it means that you have to have an existing principal structure on your lot. So you can't, if you have a vacant lot, you cannot go and put a carport on that lot by itself. You have to have a principal structure in order to have a carport. No different from a carriage house. You have to have a principal structure in order to have a carriage house on your lot. Maximum footprint, I figured out if you take parking spaces of a nine by 18 parking space, so two of those, plus an additional space for like a boat, what a boat would be parked in, and a golf cart, that equates up to about 600 square foot footprint. So that way, depending on the configuration, you could potentially get two cars, a boat, and a golf cart underneath that. We want to talk about height. So one of our concerns is that we didn't want to allow carports that are going to overpower a structure. So if you have a small cottage house, what we're saying is that, you know, you wouldn't, we wouldn't want to see a very large carport that was constructed behind the house that would overpower the house itself. So if you have a single story principal structure, you could go no taller than that single story principal structure. If you had a two story principal structure, what we're saying is that you can go no taller than 18 feet. And a picked 18 feet is that if you, if you drive a, a, a trailered boat or an RV, most bridges in the United States allow for a clearance of 18 feet. So you can get, you can get under a bridge, then 18 feet is sufficient for what you are, what you're trying to park. Again, if you have that two story structure, you can only go up to 18 feet. You might not need 18 feet, but that's as, as high as you'd be allowed.
Is that 18 foot considered from the ridge cap?
That's, we haven't gone that far. So that's something that we'll flush out to make sure that we can, we can, we can figure that out. Most likely what we can do is ask the plate, but then we'll have to fill, fill, figure out from a pitched roof standpoint. And I think that's where HPC will come into play to help from a configuration. We talked about no solid walls. So there'd be no solid walls allowed for this. No more than two sides that could be enclosed with either louvered or horizontal panels.
So when we say no solid walls and then under it says no more than two sides may be enclosed.
Enclosed with louvered panels, so still has the, has an opening to it.
I believe that did come from council.
Yes, sir.
I remember it now.
Yep. We talked about limited power. You referred to making sure like, hey, you got to have a light in this thing so you can see what you're doing. And then we said no internal plumbing. That's not to say that you couldn't have a spigot that was ran next to it or, you know, it's, it's close by. Because I understand the need for, if you have a boat, you just got it off, you got to wash it out, so. But the intent is to make sure that it doesn't have the internal plumbing. The concerns from staff is once you start having internal plumbing, you start having sinks, you have toilets. Walls could be enclosed in and before you know it, you have an additional structure that is being. We talked about the placement, that the, it's near the rear of the lot or at a minimum 20 feet behind the front plane of the principal structure. And what that does is right now, we currently require, if you have an accessory structure, it has to be placed at least 20 feet behind the front plane. So the, the front of your house, your, that structure for your driveway has to be pushed back at least 20 feet for it to be placed there. With our form based code, the whole point is that the principal structure is the focal point and then the accessory structures are kind of set back a little bit. So it is, that's consistent with our carriage house requirements right now. Yes, sir.
If it's a carport, 20 feet to me is accessible. If it's a carport, because a carport means that they want to park the car so they can go into the house.
You said 20 from the front of the house.
From the front of the house?
Back, yeah.
From the back.
Yeah, from the front.
From the, from the front plane of the house. So wherever the, the front corner.
Or back.
Yeah, so the front corner of the house, you go back 20 feet and then that's where they can, they can place it. Okay. And then we talked about no more than one carport allowed per lot. So with that, if town council agrees with these proposed changes, what we're considering doing is then take this to Historic Preservation Commission as well as Planning Commission as workshop items. Because I, I needed to get some feedback from you to kind of set the path that we wanted to go down. What we can do now is have these two groups be able to review it and fine tune it just like that with the pitched roofs. Like that's something that we would need to look into. And I would want guidance from our, our Historic Preservation members in order to give, you know, accurate feedback. So what we would do is we'd bring these two items in front of those two groups. And then it would go to, ultimately, we go to Planning Commission for a recommendation and then back to you as a first and second reading. However, based off what we've heard tonight about the golf carts, if that is something that you wish, we could, we could add this item on for a, for an opportunity for the public to, to, to weigh in on that.
I, I don't speak for council, obviously. I would, everything you've just said to us, with all of the notes and recommendations that you took from this council, and I haven't heard any opposition to what you just went through. I think it would be wise to let it go through the process of the committees. We can always do a workshop if necessary, but I think to go through those committees may flush out additional information for council to be, to, to review, you know, when it comes back through.
Okay.
That's just me, I, you know, I don't know how the others feel.
Well, I mean, no matter what we do, it's got to go through them.
Right.
You know, and they deal with this every day, or this type stuff. So I'm okay with letting them, letting them grab it.
Process, okay.
Get their recommendations. We don't have to necessarily listen to them, but we want to hear their.
Correct.
And on that too, I would like to add the flooring, you know, whether or not you can have a concrete slab.
We can add that. I would assume yes, that would be allowed.
I would think.
Yes.
That it would be cleaner and better if you could.
We can, we can provide some like, design, like guidelines and just, you know, you could do gravel, you could do concrete, you know, whatever.
Not saying you have to do it, but if you wanted to pour concrete, then.
Yes. Okay.
I just want to confirm, this is anything not in a development agreement? Is that within the town?
Correct, this is just.
The 8% that is not in a development agreement?
Well, this is, this is specifically for the historic district.
Okay, thank you. My only other comment, and I do really like the percentage lot coverage because I do think it does protect our green space, the runoff and prevent overcrowding. And it obviously makes a lot of sense. I would like us to consider that if the lot size allows and it is under the percentage lot coverage, I think we should, I would recommend us allowing for two carports. I think there are some lots in the historic district that are large that people could subdivide if they wanted to and get a primary house and an accessory dwelling unit and a carport. And instead of going through that process, I think giving them one more carport should be considered.
You're going to more than one on a lot?
If a lot allow, if the lot size allows for it and it is under the percentage lot coverage. You got to remember that percentage lot coverage is going to maximum out at, it's either 50, 60, or 70%. So most are going to max out at that. But there are certain lots that are large in the historic district, about an acre, that only have one house on it. Some of those can't even have an accessory dwelling unit because they have an attached garage. And I think we should consider, again, if it is under the percentage lot coverage, allowing them to. They could technically subdivide a lot of these lots, put a primary house, put an accessory dwelling unit and a carport if they really wanted to. Again, it's very few lots, but there are some in the historic district that would, that are that size.
I don't know how I feel about that one, but I.
There's not that many lots that big.
I would say let it go through the process and let, let the question be asked to the other committees and get feedback, so.
What we can do is we'll do some, some research on using our GIS to determine like what lots, like how many lots out there, and then find that threshold of, you know, you know, what we would consider as a large lot. Obviously, riverfront edge lots, the majority of them are at an acre. Some of them are less than that. But that's something we'll look into and then put that kind of as an asterisk, says that's something that, you know, town council is, is considering that the two carports based off of the, the larger lots and then, you know, just making sure that they didn't, you know, go over that maximum lot coverage.
Because on that point, and I think you bring up one that currently, if a house has a carport attached to it, that would be, and let's say they're already maxed at their one or two, if you're in the River District, accessory dwelling units, if, if they currently have a carport attached to the house, they could not do another one.
Correct.
And there are quite a few homes that already have that one carport, again, attached to the house.
A carport doesn't, you can't put a boat on it. You know, I mean, if you got an average sized boat, like Al's boat, or 25 foot boat with a T-top.
Yep.
Only go in the garage, so you know what I mean? There would be a, a lot of people that would like to have one. Even if they have a car garage attached.
Okay, next question for you. Is that this only pertains to the historic district?
Yes, sir.
So the areas outside of the historic district, such as Gokee Road and Buck Island, Simmonsville area, what's the rule for them? Is this allowed there?
They're allowed, yes, they're already allowed.
Currently allowed.
Yes, and there's no, there's no regulations on them.
Is there a limit?
No.
It kind of is made.
Okay.
So are we in agreeance to let them look at it and come back with recommendations?
Yes, sir. Okay.
That's good for me.
We've got our marching orders, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have a public hearing and final reading on a request by Live Well, Liv Well Terrace LP Wolda Cooper Group with authorization from the property owner, Beaufort Memorial Hospital, for the 100% affordable workforce housing project to be known as Liv Well Terrace located at 335 Buck Walter Parkway and identified as Beaufort County Tax MAC map number R6100300007120000. This is a public hearing and final reading, Mr. Kevin Icard.
Yes, sir, and this is a public hearing.
Yes. So I'm going to call for public, first call for public comment on this, on this agenda item. Seeing none, second call for public comment. Third call for public comment. This public hearings, public comment is closed for this public hearing. Now it's your turn.
Great, thank you, sir. There are no changes from first reading, so I do have the motions here for you. If you so choose, you can just make a statement of as shown on the screen.
Comments from council?
I have a question. And this is just something that came up. Is any part of this property subject, I mean, is this subject to our wetland ordinance that we recently passed?
All properties are subject to the wetland ordinance, yes, so.
And is, do you know if any, if this property has a wetland on it?
There are no wetlands on this property and this property actually is deeded with a 50 foot wetland buffer on it already.
Thank you.
Okay, no more comments?
If council would like, I can answer the question that came up during public comment about the number of units. So the town currently has 115 residential units that we own in a bank from Buck Walter. We would be transferring 60 of those 115 to Beaufort Memorial Hospital as part of this. So we would still have 55 residential units in the Buck Walter Development Agreement.
In our bank?
Correct, in our bank.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, for the first one on the screen, as on the screen. I'll make the motion, mayor, um, for the first one on the screen, as on the screen, approving the acquisition of this residential development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Here's motion.
Another motion for this second article here?
I move to approve the motion as shown on the screen.
Is there a second? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And then here's the last motion.
Then we have the third one here, we need another motion for.
I move to approve the motion as shown on the screen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Great.
You are on aye, right, Ridge?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, up next, we have formal agenda items. This is an ordinance amending section 21, emergency management to define a local civil emergency. It's dec, declaration and termination, authority and powers and additional amendments to the town's emergency management policies and procedures. This will be first reading, Mr. Stees.
Mayor and council, you have in front of you, and I'm going to go through a little bit, a, uh, updated, uh, section or chapter two and 21 of the town code as it relates to the declaration of local civil emergencies, uh, a little bit of background. So the town adopted chapter two, article seven of our code that talks about emergency management in 2008, and then we adopted chapter 21 that does emergency permitting procedures in 2009. These, uh, remained in place until 2023, when we combined them into chapter 21, where we talked about emergency management, uh, and as civil emergencies. Emergency procurement remained in chapter two, however, after the amendments in 2023. Chapters two and 21, up until we made that change, um, and since we made that change, have identified what classifies as emergency with the town, how emergency is declared, extended, amended, or terminated. Um, the roles of the mayor and council during emergency, the town manager, our emergency manager, as well as other staff, especially when we get into the recovery, um, procedures and permitting. Um, it also addresses regulations that are suspended and the authority that may be granted during an emergency. Um, we also talk about, um, again, a, as I mentioned earlier, what happens with inspections, permits and everything as we get into recovery. Um, there were some questions raised, um, to the town attorney and myself about the declaration process, state law related to emergencies and recommend, and any recommendations that there may be to make amendments to the town code when it comes to emergency, uh, procedures. Um, so legal completed this, uh, the research, they looked into what state law says, any case law that was out there about local governments and emergency declarations. They looked at other council manager forms of government and how they address emergencies. They also reviewed our code of ordinances for any amendments that we might want to make, and they also prepared some recommended amendments and reviewed those with staff and then in town council as well, um, and asked for any feedback and edits from council.
I'd say Mr. Stees summed that up much better than I could have.
So, um, as we get into the discussion of what's in there, there are some proposed edits. So what would happen is we, um, anything to do with emergency management would be, um, removed from chapter, uh, two and moved to chapter 21. Um, with that, we would make one change to chapter two, which is to address, uh, local civil emergency, uh, procurements, and those are emergency procurements that take place whenever, like during a hurricane. If we need to procure, uh, brush removal, or we need to procure, uh, somebody to come in and feed, we need to buy cots, we need to buy emergency, those are emergency procurements that take place, a lot of those we have contracts for, but there's always things that come up that we don't anticipate. Um, what it does is it outlines in there that we have, I bring those back to you within 90 days after the civil emergency to make sure that you have a chance to review and, um, make any comments or suggestions that you have moving forward on any future, uh, emergencies. Uh, in other words, I'll review and make sure that you, you know, by either email or text messaging, because we know if there's a tornado that comes through, or like during Helene and there were trees, or like during Helene and there were trees on the road, we may not be able to get you all in person, so it allows us to communicate electronically to get that. So, but at a minimum, the goal is to get all of council convened to approve the declaration of emergency. It also outlines action should a quorum not be present, so, or be, be possible. So if we can't get everybody together and there's been an emergency and we need to move forward, um, after two hours should not, that not be able to happen, um, then the governing authority, whether that's the mayor or the mayor pro tem in his absence or however it falls out, depending on what's going on at the time. And so, for example, if we have, I use again, example, a tornado, and we can't get the mayor, we can't get the mayor pro tem, we go to the next senior ma, uh, person on council, whoever's filling that role at that time would have the ability to declare the emergency. The goal is then to pull council together as soon as possible at a minimal, no more than, at a maximum of no more than 48 hours. So if we can convene everybody 30 minutes after we make it the declaration, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working to get you together so we can then fi, formalize that declaration.
Governing authority is defined as mayor, then mayor pro tem, then most senior council member.
Correct. So, again, we'll, we'll work with who we can get depending on what the emergency is. Um, as it says, council, town council would be convened as needed after that to either amend, extend or terminate. I give, for example, um, COVID, we met many ti, or I wasn't here, I came in at the end of that, but during the emergency decorations, you met on a regular basis and had conversations about amending it or extending it or things, or the different restrictions you wanted to put in place. That could happen, you know, if we have a hurricane that comes through that is severe, we may want to continue to extend it, or we may amend it by saying you can move in these areas, but not in these because we haven't cleared debris, so, but we would still pull town council together to make sure we amend, extend or terminate any proclamation. Um, it also outlines that council should be kept updated. Again, it defines that the governing body shall keep the town council fully advised as to the status of the local civil emergency. Um, and then it also outlines the powers and duties of the town manager to respond to the emergency in section 21.4. I didn't put all that in here because it's a pretty long section. Um, and then it makes some grammatical and terminology edits, because we are changing the terminology to a local civil emergency, it goes through the rest of the code of that section and changes a low, emergency to a local civil emergency to match the terminology throughout, um, as well as during the permitting and recovering section of the rest of the chapter.
What's the difference in a local civil emergency and a local?
So a local civil emergency.
Like a school, you know, like a hostage situation or a, you know, something.
So a, a local civil emergency, when you go back to the definition, it catches all of those things, um, because it's anything that creates a great public crisis, uh, natural disaster, cyber attack, rioting, civil disturbance, catastrophe, or may occur or cause widespread or severe damage, injury or loss of life. It goes underneath the police protection of, the police power of the, of the town to be able to protect our, our citizens from, um, damage or property loss, injury, citizens' life, health, wellness. Um, the, um, reason it's called a local civil emergency is before, when we declared a state of emergency, there was some confusion because in state law, the governor has the ability to declare a state of emergency, and then there were some confu, some questions when we looked into it on whether local governments can actually declare a state of emergency or if it conflicts with state law. So that's where the local civil emergency, we can, it, it addresses what we can do, but it also meets the definition of FEMA, so that if we declare a local civil emergency, it starts our clock on being able to get the FEMA funds reimbursed to the town. So that was, um, what legal recommended. It's also what, I think we took the term from Myrtle Beach, as in that's what they put in place, so, um, that, that was where the terminology came from. So should council decide to move forward, we're at first reading, uh, second reading would be proposed for next month if it passes first reading tonight, and then it would go into effect thereafter, and, um, I would hope and pray that we don't have to use it this hurricane season as we see it turning out there right now. Um, but if we have to, we would have a new policy in place beginning September 10, or September 9th after council approved.
All right, discussion from council, let's start with Bridget.
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burton?
Um, what are the, going back to the specific changes between what is currently written, written and what is being proposed? What is like the bottom line, like the?
The, the bottom line really gets to what I outlined here in the code that I pulled out, defining what the local civil emergency is, because it, it's more detailed than it was, and that was some of the questions that came up, is making sure that the emergency, the declaration has some guidelines around it to make sure it's not just being used randomly, that there's actually some reasoning behind it and, and it has to show severe damage, injury, loss of life. The, the other biggest change is how we declare it. Previously, it was outlined that the mayor could declare and then would just notify council and move forward, and, um, so this would allow, this requires it to be done by council at all if possible, and then it would make y'all come back within 48 hours if it's, within 48 hours if we can't convene y'all to vote on it.
But it also legalizes a text or email or whatever from.
Right, to be able to count as that, that.
Prior or currently written, the mayor could do it and not.
Right.
Correct. And it, right, and that was the, that was one of the questions that was raised with the mayor council form of government, and one of the things that came up, and again, Myrtle Beach is the mayor council form of government, and this is one of the ways that they do it. Um, Hilton Head, for example, they, um, they are a little different, they allow, um, if I remember correctly, the mayor to declare, but council has to come back together within 24 or 48 hours to, um, adopt or support. This would be more like Myrtle Beach where it requires you try to pull all of council together to vote, and if you can't, we still bring you back together as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Those are the big changes.
Any more comments from council? If not, there's someone like to make a motion?
To move, to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two and chapter 21 of the town code as related to the declaration of the local civil emergency and other matters related there too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have a resolution to approve a three-party agreement between Buck Walters Association, Beaufort County and the town of Bluffton, to construct connection road between Buck Walter Place and Washington Square. And I think we've gonna table this one, are we?
Yes, that would be my recommendation. Um, we received an update that there are some, um, changes that may be substantial in nature that, um, the other attorneys from the other parties have requested, and we just have not had time to review those changes or incorporate those. So what I can do is give you a brief update so you know what's coming forward or, um, however you'd like to proceed.
Read it again anyway, right?
Pardon me?
We have to hear it again.
We'll hear it again, yes.
So, I mean, I know what it's all about already.
If you want to take a vote, we can.
Okay, so we need a motion to table this?
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this has been tabled, Ms. Marcia.
Give me a quick question.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone, um, that would like to remove anything from this consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Um, where we at? Okay, is there a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters regarding town council appointments to boards, of boards, committees and commissions? Freedom of Information Act 30 dash four dash 70A1 and discussion of land purchase agreements located in the Buck Walter tract pursuant to South Carolina Freedom of Information Act 30 dash four dash 70A2.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
We are out of executive session. No votes were taken, no decisions were made. We do have a couple of pieces of business here. Somebody has a motion? Ares and committees?
I have a motion. I move to appoint Ashley Feaster, Jerry Reeves, Usam Abuqatar, and Kerry Murphy to the seats of Director to the Don Ryan Center of Innovation Board of Directors with terms expiring June 30th of 2028.
Any discussion? There's second? All in favor?
Aye.
We have another motion?
I move to adjourn.
Well, no, wait a minute. Does she list everybody?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Alright, so the next one is regarding item two on executive session agenda, and I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Inland Bluffton LLC for the 55.18 acre parcel more or less shown on the plat recorded in the Beaufort County Register of deeds at book 140, page 11, noted as parcel 5C for the purchase of $3,860,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
If I knew Dan would spend that much money, I would have kept adjourned.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.